Good evening. I think we're ready here to go ahead and call our meeting to order. We, again, welcome everyone here that's here so far in the administration side. We do need to go into closed session early and have a brief discussion about some personnel matters. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel issues, and preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right. The motion carries five one. All right.
Good evening and welcome to our May meeting of the Iroshville School Board of Education. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight and we'll go through our agenda here shortly, but I will first ask one of our board members to make a motion that we go back into open session. We've been in closed session for the last thirty minutes discussing personnel issues.
Motion to go back in open session.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in open session again. As is our tradition, let's all take a first few moments to meditate in a moment of silence, asking for guidance and the work that we have before us with keeping the interest of our children within the system in our utmost minds as we make our decisions tonight. So if we all bow with solemn meditation with me. Thank you. This will stand for the presentation of our colors and we will, let me introduce Chase Dobson and Chase Store who are from Central School to have our pledge of allegiance.
Part time march. Colors, move. Or, coach. Left, peace. Carry, coach. Present, coach.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or, coach. Or, coach. Right, peace. Towards, left. Super, march.
Thank you. Thank you, Chase and Chase, for helping us with our pledge of allegiance tonight. We appreciate your being here. We begin our agenda with the consent agenda. We have no items under the administration portion tonight, so we'll move right on into our personnel portion. For those without an agenda, you can follow with us on the screen here. We have items B, C, D, E, F, and G. The acceptance of resignations, retirements, rehires, terminations, and leaves of absence. The approval of classified personnel, approval of licensed personnel, approval of administrative appointments, approval of reinstated personnel, and the approval of contracts for licensed and administrative personnel and non-renewal of probationary contracts. Dr. LaSane.
Mr. Johnson, Dr. Cash, members of the board, I am definitely not going to repeat all of that for all of the items. You've had an opportunity to review the May Personnel Report. I would highlight that in addition to your standard Personnel Report, we, you also have the teacher recommendations, the non-renewal recommendations, as well as the administrative recommendations. Are there any questions regarding any of these items?
Any questions or comments for Dr. LaSane? Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have the minutes from the April fourth Committee of the whole meeting, April eleventh, the Board of Education meeting minutes, and then April twenty seventh are called Board of Education meeting minutes. We have no additions or corrections to those minutes. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda for the minutes.
I have a correction. For the minutes on, the Board of Education minutes, April eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, if you'll look on page six, it states that regarding the policy thirteen ten four thousand and two parental involvement, second reading, it stated that, I wanted to amend it saying that parents must opt-in for the information on sex trafficking prevention and awareness. That's really, I wanted it noted, not the sex trafficking, what it, what it was that I'm trying to be clear. It was, I wanted the curriculum, this sexual health education curriculum should be under the parental permission, what was it?
Section D.
Section D.
C three.
Where they have to give permission. Instead of C, it should be in D.
Right.
Just so, in two thousand and fourteen, if you'll remember, the task force went all summer long and then we finally voted in September. And to align with that, we voted that parents will sign to opt-in for their student.
I make a motion that we accept the Personnel Report, the consent, all items in the consent agenda, along with the correction in the May eleventh minutes, for point of clarification. April eleventh, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items and these minutes with the correction Ms. Haines stated on the April eleventh set of minutes. Is there a second to that motion?
Sir.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Let's move on into our recognition portion of the meeting tonight. Again, we have item A, the Superintendent's Advisory Board Recognition and Presentation. Ms. Wahlberg.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Well, last September, last September twenty-third, the two thousand and fifteen sixteen Superintendent's Advisory Council met for the very first time. A junior and a senior from each of our seven high schools were selected by their administration to sit on this panel. And this was a real strong wish of Mr. Johnson's to have this happen this year and continue it on. We met again on December tenth and for the last time for this academic year on March seventeenth. Mr. Johnson made good use of these students, getting their input on initiatives implemented at their schools, topical discussions of technology, the ten-point grading system, budget priorities, and so on. Next year's advisory group will contain our juniors from this year as they rise up to be seniors, I hope. Oh, there they are. I hope they're rising up to be seniors. And then we, the schools will select a, a rising junior over the summer. And our students have a short presentation that they'd like to make to the board tonight. And then when you are done, we have four of them here out of all of them, you know, busy high schoolers. Would you guys stay up here because I want to get a picture of you, okay? All right?
Good evening, Dr. Cash and members of the board. We have a brief presentation that hopefully won't take too long. Okay, so I'll introduce who's here tonight. You know me, Jay Sherrill from South Iroshville High School. We have Dylan Kosowski from South Iroshville High School, Haley Durham from South Iroshville High School, and Bryant Heron from West Iroshville High School. So who we are as a group, the Superintendent's Advisory Council consists of students from each high school and in early, in the early college programs. Each principal selects a junior and a senior from those schools in their own way to represent their school and student body in our program. And how they're chosen is often by class president or class rank. There's a variety of ways that they're chosen. But the schools who send students do include our five regular high schools and the two early college programs.
All right, so our role on the Superintendent's Advisory Council is to allow students from the high schools in our school system to kind of have a voice and to tell Mr. Johnson kind of our thoughts and give him feedback and any concerns we might have. And so with that feedback, he was able to then use it and hear kind of firsthand what's going on with the schools and hear kind of how it's affecting the kids, for instance, the MACs. And then he can then use this and turn it into kind of benefiting the students and coming to you guys and letting you know what the students are saying.
So, over the year, we talked about technology, class rank, GPA, student view on budget priorities, building, construction, and maintenance of facilities, and then the college application process preparation.
See, our first subject that we talked about was the district's use of technology, specifically the one-to-one initiative. We came to the conclusion that the MacBooks are the best devices, but due to overreliance on a Google-based software, we found that other choices may have been better from a fundamental and economic standpoint. Our main question though was, was it sustainable? Is it worth extending the life of the MacBooks, you know, in our school system? And sadly, only time will tell on that one.
In addition to talking about the technology initiative in Iroshville Schools, we talked a little bit about the class rank and GPA changes that took place this year, following a presentation by Dr. Taylor on the issue and kind of how it took place, how it began. I think the group as a whole walked away with a much better understanding that this was not something that the district or the Board of Education or the administration kind of controlled, that this was handed down from the state. And so we talked about kind of what we thought were the benefits of the system and some of the things that we thought were the downfalls of the system. And something that our group agreed upon as a whole is that we thought it was very odd that with the ten-point scale, that a student who scored a ninety or a ninety-one received an entire quality point, that a student who scored an eighty-nine or an eighty-eight did not. We thought there should be some sort of step in between those levels because you, there's a huge variance between an eighty-nine and an eighty, or a ninety-nine and a ninety. So we thought removing an entire quality point from a student's grade because they were one point shy of that ten-scale mark, ten-point scale mark, was not the best way to address it. And so we were going to ask that the board and that the school administration kind of bring that up in whatever method is most useful to you, to who's involved at the state level with that, because it does seem a little bit like a discrepancy.
We also talked about the budget. And so Mr. Johnson presented to us the budget cuts that had been made since the recession two thousand and eight. And so we looked at what had been cut. And now that budget growth is happening, we've decided on a few things that funding should go to. And one is the student support services, which includes counselors, social workers, specific college help, et cetera. Another one is hiring more teachers. I'd say that's pretty important. And then supplement increase.
The next thing we talked about was construction and facility maintenance. Our group met with Mr. Rob Jackson to discuss the construction and facility maintenance that took place across all our schools. And this was a fairly new topic for us, but we agreed that all the work that was being done was the correct one. And our only suggestion was that a heavy focus be applied in considering the quality of technology and wireless equipment in schools and the trouble of one-to-one devices.
See, we also talked about the college application process and how our high schools play a role in that for the students. We met with Ms. Suzanne Wegmiller from Crosby Scholars to discuss the process. After her presentation, which I might add was very fun and interactive, we decided that a heavier emphasis on college application preparation is needed for juniors and seniors. The college application process is not an easy one, and there are too many students and not enough time for counselors to reach out to every single student effectively throughout the process. We believe that more support and guidance is needed in this area, possibly through teachers or other staff.
And of course, we were a little biased, being a group of juniors and seniors, in saying that college help and preparation was going to be a huge focus for us and should be a focus for the district, merely because we're going through the process right now or have just finished the process. But in conclusion, our time meeting with Mr. Johnson and other administration staff has been incredibly eye-opening, not only for us, but hopefully for the members that we met with to kind of hear what students thought, and especially such a wide range of students from across the county at one time. And hopefully, we were able to provide some helpful feedback, and I know for sure that we've learned a lot throughout the process. So I'm happy to see that this program can continue. And if you have any questions, we would be more than happy to answer them. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here.
And I would like to take a minute to compliment you guys, you know, for taking the time out of your, your year to do this and to become more acquainted with the processes. I think it's a fantastic experience that you're getting. I hope that you'll use it to maybe one day run for school board.
These are the first two rows are North Iroshville, I know that.
Right, we're right in front of that statue.
Yeah.
These are the two.
These are the two.
These are the two.
We need smart, unbound kids, I think it's also.
I don't know, I thought we, I thought we'd be.
I don't know, I don't know, I didn't understand.
Good as kid, be told to run for school board.
We need smart, unbound kids, I think it's also.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
The next recognition is the CCTL recognition, Ms. Weiberg up front again.
Thank you again. In February, the North Carolina New Schools Breakthrough Learning recognized CCTL as a school of innovation and excellence. And we have not had a chance to bring this to your full attention until now, so here we are. This recognition identifies CCTL as a leader in academic excellence and innovative practice. It is a testament to the shared leadership among the staff, the commitment of the teachers and administrators, and the hard work of the students. The selection was based on a combined review of data and evidence-based assessments. CCTL met the established standards set by NC New Schools Breakthrough Learning, and they now have the option to serve as a host for learning tours and study visits to share their success stories with other schools and administrations. This is an important milestone in the journey of CCTL towards providing quality public education for the children in our community. Together, we'll continue on this path to best prepare each and every one of our students to graduate ready for college careers and life. And tonight, Ms. Terri Hutchins is here with us, the principal of CCTL. And if her board members, oh, and she brought a group. Ms. Haynes, and her, excuse me, her award is that one that's on little feet. Yes.
Okay, next we have the North Idol High School North Carolina Cattle Handling Competition, Ms. Todd Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, board members, and Mr. Johnson. Really proud tonight to recognize some of the great achievements of our students and teachers. And tonight, it's my privilege to report that the North Idol FFA won first place in the North Carolina Cattle Handling Contest. The event was sponsored by the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service, North Carolina Cattlemen's Association, and several animal health companies. Students must take a, and pass a beef quality assurance test. They have to work three head of cattle based on the beef quality assurance standards and compete in the Skellathon where they have to identify breeds of beef breeds, of beef cattle, excuse me, feedstuffs, and livestock tools. This contest is a wonderful day to put the knowledge into action in real-life scenarios. So I want to introduce the team members now, and they are Ms. Anna Smith. Come on up, Anna. Austin Rash, and Mr. Luke Holland. And their advisor was Mr. Bill Walker. If you guys would come up. These guys are going to have to stand up here a little bit longer because we've got another recognition to report. Oops, I just passed the page. Pardon me. I also like to work, recognize these FFA students for representing our county and our state. And over spring break, they were second in the state in the livestock evaluation contest, which was in Raleigh. I want to point out that there were 45 teams involved in this contest, and this marks the fourth year in a row that these guys have placed in the top three in the, in the top three in the state. So they have been together since their freshman year along with Karen Sloan. Karen, if you'll come up here. So all three of them, I'll read their names again, is Anna Smith, Austin Rash, Karen Sloan, and Luke Holland. And their advisor was Mr. Ted Clayton. Congratulations again. Got one more great achievement, and this is a young man from West Idol High School, junior, Mr. Anthony Ross. Anthony, come on up, please. He placed second overall in the North Carolina Skills USA Customer Service Competition, which was recently held in Greensboro, North Carolina. Like to also recognize his instructor, Ms. Wendy Lane. She's not here tonight. She's with her children. But she actually chartered the school for the chapter this year for the first year, and she coached Anthony onto victory. Want to point out that Anthony will represent our state in this competition at the national contest in Louisville, Kentucky in June. And Ms. Lane will accompany him, so I'm looking forward to that, and it's good to be recognized. Go to the state, to the national competition. That's outstanding.
And next we have the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Heart of a Champion Recognitions, Mr. Armstrong.
Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. The North Carolina High School Athletic Association is proud to recognize 27 student athletes as Heart of a Champion award winners for their outstanding sportsmanship. These students were honored on Saturday, April 9, 2016, at a lunch sponsored by the North Carolina Farm Bureau Mutual Insurance Company at the Sheraton Hotel in Chapel Hill. Each North Carolina High School Athletic Association member school has the opportunity to nominate one male and one female student athlete for the recognition. The athletes cannot have been ejected from any contest and must have demonstrated outstanding citizenship and sportsmanship during their high school careers. These athletes are nominated and selected because they displayed good sportsmanship and behavior in and out of the playing arena is critical to the success of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association programs. By highlighting fine peer models such as these students, we hope to reinforce the positive behavior and character traits we believe our student athletes learn from their involvement in high school athletics. And that's from Q. Tucker, our commissioner, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. I'm proud and I'm hoping they're here. The, our two winners of the 27 student athletes that were honored across the state representing West Idol High School, and Mr. Gallion, if you, could you help me with the two certificates on the table? Mr. Zach Mays and Ms. Kaylee Sherrill, if they're here, if they please come up. They are not here, but let's give them a hand anyway.
And next we have the Battle of the Books, the Elementary Battle of the Books Recognitions, Dr. David Blatner.
Dr. Cash, Mr. Johnson, members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce the winners this year of our Battle of the Books competition, both in elementary and middle. Each year, the middle schools and elementary schools compete at Unity Center, and they are supplied, or they have for an elementary range, 17 different books these students read, and in middle school, 27 books that they read. And they can be asked any question about any detail of any of those books the entire time they're there. These teams work tirelessly, reading these books, studying them. I've seen my daughters didn't participate this year, but they have participated before, and it is amazing the amount of time and effort they put into this. Pleased to, I'll call up the elementary Battle of the Books first. Our winner for elementary was East Idol Elementary School. And if their coach is Rita Otten, who is the library media specialist, I was also assisted by Angela Burgess, a volunteer, and I saw Ms. Ryan was also there. If they come forward and help, Ms. Haynes, could you help pass out the awards? There's a stack there for elementary. And I'll call up each of the students. If you come on up when I call your name, and you can line up with your, with your team. We have Ava Austin, Bricksan Burgess, Catherine Seero, Case Cleaves, Lily Goforth, Kushi Patel, Atlee Sparks, and Cadence Wenzel. For middle school, we are recognizing Lakeshore Middle School, which I also wanted to say they, this is their fourth year in a row that Lakeshore Middle School has won this distinction. And they went on to represent the county regional competition. They are coached by Joan Milliken, the library media specialist, also this year was our media specialist of the year, actually for last year. And I saw Mr. Foster here as well. So if you guys would come forward, and we will call their names. Ms. Bonham and Mr. Page, you both kind of, so if you want to both help out, because there's a lot there. We have Vivian Anderson, Samantha Beaver, Joshua Campbell, Lily Answiler, Mackenzie Libby, Rebecca Lassard, Anish Nashin, Riley Pfeifer, Amelia Van Warmer, and Sumi Verma.
Next, we have the LOES presentation to Scott's Elementary School, Ms. Weiberg.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cash. I'm going to turn most of this over to Ms. Mihal. But it's been a big couple of months at Scott's Elementary. Since being named an A-plus arts integrated school, the good news for them just keeps on coming. And tonight, we're going to celebrate their receipt of a significant LOES grant that will allow the school to purchase iPads, carts, and covers for grades four and five to use in the classroom every day. Lindsay is here, so I'm going to turn this over to her. Thank you.
We just want to thank LOES. They've been really good to us. This is our second big technology award from LOES, and it's just been really great partnering with them. Our students are really excited to be able to have some new technology in the classroom, some iPads and things. So we just thank them and thank them for coming today and, and supporting us.
Congratulations to Scott School, and we again want to show as a board our appreciation to the corporate sponsors. We appreciate LOES and what they do for all our schools. And again, we congratulate all the awards winners tonight. Appreciate all of you staying and watching each other get the awards tonight. I think that means a lot to each group. As they're leaving, I'll introduce our next portion of the agenda, which is a non-consent agenda. We have quite a few items on there. I expect they'll move quickly, but each of these are voting items. So we'll begin just a moment with Ms. White presenting our 2015-16 audit contract. Whenever you feel it's appropriate for us to hear you.
I don't know why they don't want to stay for this thrilling information, but we are here to present to the board the contract for our 2015-16 financial audit. Firm that we use is Coffee Lovins and Company out of Statesville. This is our third year with this firm. The contracted amount is $29,500, which is just a $500 increase over last year. They did not have it increased the second year, so over the three-year term, it's just gone up $500. So we do ask for the board's approval tonight.
Now, I have any questions? I was going to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Have a motion in a second to approve the audit contract as presented. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the contract, motion, please say aye. Motion carries. Thanks, Moise. Item B is the CTE Local Plan 2016-17, Mr. Williams.
Thank you again, Dr. Cash and board members, and Mr. Johnson. I presented it last week at the Cal meeting. Want to see if anyone had any questions tonight about our plan?
I just want to say I was very pleased that we're going to get Ag program at Statesville High School. It's a good move forward, and I'm also pleased with the STEM, STEM initiatives. So I'd like to thank you for putting together a good plan.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
to see if it would meet our qualifications. At this time, I would like to recommend that we go ahead and award the bid. I did tell them I wouldn't bring that to y'all's attention, but I feel that they've had time to do that throughout the year, to start reformulating, and that they should have done it. But I did tell them that if they presented new milk to us, we would do a test taste throughout next school year, and if they did bring forth a better quality, I would have no problems with test tasting it with the students, and then maybe possibly looking at rebid next school year. So that's what I recommend to the board. Any questions on the milk bid?
We're going to vote on these individually or both together?
That was my question, too.
I think since we had discussion last week, I think if the board's okay with it, we'll go ahead and present all the bids at one time and then vote.
Okay. And I recommend that we award a new bread bid to Bimbo Bakeries, who we're currently with. They have dropped prices, so I recommend that we award that bid to them. And all other bids, US Food, Hershey's Ice Cream, Alco bids, and Pepsi, that we roll over with those bids this school year. Any questions?
Just a question. Where is Bimbo Breaker?
They're actually out of Clermont. I'm on the other side of Clermont.
Clermont?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
If you've never been to tour their factory, you need to go.
No, never been there.
Sounds good.
Bimbo Bakeries. I'll make a motion to accept these bids from the nutrition department.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Did you want to say anything about produce beforehand? I know you said we're continuing.
Yes, produce. We will be purchasing that through our DOD department with our entitlement money, $120,000. So.
That's part of your.
And that's part of the USDA entitlement money that we're awarded every year. We got awarded $540,000, and we have put it, set aside $120,000 toward produce.
I think just point of clarification, I'm assuming you meant to include that in your.
Yes, I thought we had already covered that.
Okay, so that, I think that motion is clarified now. Any further discussion, comments about these bids? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve those as written and presented to us. Any, if no other discussion, unless we're voting, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thanks. Motion carries. Next, Tina, go ahead and present the child nutrition pricing.
Okay. I'm recommending that we increase lunch prices ten cent next year due to the lunch equity payment plan that we are required by USDA to fill out to close the gap with their reimbursement that they give us on our free and reduced meals. And that would be ten cent increase K through five and six through 12. And breakfast will remain the same.
Just so I have this clear, because we get free and reduced lunch, they're requiring us to close the gap between what it is and what it is? So we raise the price of.
What they're saying is they reimburse us for the free meal and reduced meal more than we're taking in on the full paid meals.
So it goes along with the statement that nothing in life is free?
That is correct.
Thank you. I make a motion to accept the increase in price.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept this meal price increase recommendation. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Next, we have a lottery application. Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Mr. Johnson, you have before you an application for lottery proceeds reimbursement from the state. We discussed this at the Cal meeting. It is for the North Irondale Project, which was a joint project between their Capital Improvements Club and the school system, and it is in the amount of $325,000. So I would request the approval of that application. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Miller? Not will entertain a motion to approve this request.
I'll make a motion. We approve the request from the lottery system for the building at North Irondale.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, I guess I'll ask if there are any other discussion first. If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Miller. Next, three are Dr. Blatner's contract for wireless upgrade, contract for switching for the wireless upgrade, and the Microsoft EES renewal. Dr. Blatner, I'll ask you if you want to do these separately, or if you want to present them all as one. Since we've discussed these last week, we can simplify it if you want.
That'd be fine. The FNG, which are the wireless upgrade and switching wireless upgrade, that is an upgrade of $1.9 million, which will be paid for completely by state funds, not ours, and federal funds. These were the winners of the contracts to put it in. It'll more than double the capacity wireless in the elementary schools, and it'll increase, it'll upgrade and increase the capacity at the middle and high schools as well. And the Microsoft EES renewal, that is for the yearly licensing fees for our Microsoft agreements with Microsoft Office and other server software, which is a considerable savings doing it this way than buying it individually, which we discussed at the Cal. If you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I'll answer questions for Dr. Blatner.
I make a motion. We accept his recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept these two contracts and the renewal of the Microsoft EES. Any further discussion or comment? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next, we have the iReady contract. Dr. Taylor.
Yes, Dr. Cash, members of the board. Last Monday night, we did discuss the iReady contract and proposal from Curriculum and Associates. This would provide additional resources for our middle school in our core school programs. We would like to move forward with this for the 16-17 school year. Because this contract is over $90,000, it does require board approval, and we would be glad to answer any questions that you may have. This contract is a two-year contract, and it does not require additional funds above and beyond what was already in our budget.
Comments or questions for Dr. Taylor? I'll entertain a motion that we approve this contract.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the iReady contract. Any further comment or question regarding the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Next, we have the Speak Up, Be Safe fifth grade program. Again, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, several months ago, Ken Wooton from Dove House and some of the staff from Dove House presented a program for first graders called Speak Up, Be Safe. And you did approve that at the last meeting for first graders, but they would also like to implement that program with fifth graders in the upcoming school year. We did share the proposed curriculum and information that would be shared with you, and Mr. Wooton is here, should you have any questions. As we discussed earlier, Dove House would be working with our Student Services Department, and Dove House would be providing the staff to deliver this information for our students.
These PowerPoints that you provided us, are they ones for the fifth grade, ones for the first, or what are those?
These are both the fifth grade programs. It's actually two-part, and then what you got at the earlier meeting was the first grade.
Okay, I didn't know what the clarification was.
So are we going to implement the first this year and fifth next year, the first and fifth this year? What?
In our original proposal, we really wanted to do first and fifth grade. And we only had fifteen minutes to present the, if you remember, the PowerPoint at the last board, at the prior board meeting. But our goal is to get into the first and fifth grades, because that way we're getting to a lot more kids with this safety and awareness program. We do a really good job at Dove House of after the fact, and the only way that I can see that we can change the course of this abuse on these children is to get in front of them in the hopes that they, just one, one classroom session, two classroom sessions, can prevent these child from having to go through the trauma. So our goal has always been to hire full-time staff, and we think we can do it, first and fifth grade, and implement it in the fall. Matter of fact, we're interviewing two candidates tomorrow to fill this position, because we're moving forward rapidly. So.
Well, then, the natural question then would be, is there anything that they would have, that they should have picked up in the first grade that they would need before they hear the fifth grade? No?
No, I don't think so.
So you've got a sort of a separate presentation for each group, even though we're starting?
Yes, it's more age-appropriate for the first, for the first grades, and then for the fifth grade. All appropriate. Yeah, this is the same program that Rowan County has been using for years, and what they know, what they realized in the very first year, the number of reported incidents went up considerably.
Yeah. Board members, I might add that I did talk to Dr. Moody over in Rowan County, and she had nothing but compliments for this program. It has been in place there several years, and she said it's been well-received by the school system as a whole, as well as the community. And Dove House is one of our most strategic partners throughout the community, does excellent work, has an excellent reputation. So we can recommend this for you with enthusiasm.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
It's Ken Wooton. I'm the executive director at Dove House. Yes, Cindy.
What about parental permission for the fifth graders, especially the fifth graders?
Well, in Rowan County, it's not an opt-in or an opt-out. It's just part of the curriculum. So, and they've had, according to Melissa and Beth, who was the executive director and actually the teacher who teaches at the first and fifth grade levels in Rowan County, they've not had one complaint from a single parent. And you see that, you've seen the PowerPoint using superheroes and minions. It's very, it's very child, child-accepting, and there's nothing in there that's going to bring up that trauma-type thing that we're, that we deal with on a daily basis.
And this is a one-day program, right?
I mean. It's a thirty-minute session in the fall, and a thirty-minute session in the spring for first graders. It's a fifty-five-minute presentation for fifth graders in the fall and in the spring.
And we have satisfied, Dr. Taylor is satisfied that that's not going to impact any other time requirement for anything else?
They can work that into some of their existing schedules without impacting core curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Do we need a motion to accept this?
Yes.
I make a motion that we implement this program in our state system.
Second. Second, second.
Have a motion in two seconds, I believe. Give Mr. Kelly, I think he was first.
He's closer to you, I know.
Anyway, any other discussion?
No, they, and y'all had a great, successful last Saturday. Sorry we couldn't come. I couldn't come. I don't know if any of the board members were there. I know we were invited, but I know y'all do a great job, and I apologize for not being able to be there.
I think, yeah, right now, the number is right at $220,000 in community support. At the end of the day, that's, thank you so much.
Yes, you did a great job.
I would have really, I would have really glad, I would really glad, I would really have been glad to be there, but I had a birthday party, and they wouldn't let me out of it. I couldn't believe it. I asked.
When you have, when you turn eighty, it's hard to get away from murk.
Hey, hey, you know how that is.
Mr. Kelly, you should probably start at fifty-nine.
Oh.
And how's the tree we planted for you? Has you still got the dogwood tree we planted, hoping to back at the.
Yes, we do.
They do a great job, though. I tell you, they do.
We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Ken.
The, have a motion, second. If no other discussion, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have several policies that are here for second reading. Dr. Taylor's presenting, I believe, all of those. So, Dr. Taylor, if you want to present all in one group and vote, however you see fit.
I have policies K through P on the agenda. Policy K is policy 1310, 4,002 parental involvement. This does eliminate some language that refers to personal education plans, PEPs, and replaces it with basically language that is what we are doing with MTSS, that multi-tiered system of support, which we have discussed previously. It also moves and adds some information in there. There's information on sex trafficking that is added, and based on how we are currently implementing our policy regarding a comprehensive sex education program, it would move Bullet Three under Option C, opportunities to withhold consent and opt-out, to Section D under Number 12, where parents must opt-in for that. And that is currently the process that we have in place that the board approved a couple of years ago. Policy 3415, high school exams. This updates the policy to a passing grade of sixty or above to align with the state's new grading scale that was implemented. Policy 3000, goals and objectives of the educational program, replaces language regarding the Leandro case in sound basic education, and updates some Supreme Court definitions here. Policy 3430, the school improvement plan. This replaces the language Algebra One with Math One, which is the current language for the math programming that we have now. Policy 3450, comprehensive health education plan, adds language that refers to sex trafficking in that, that parents may opt their students in for, and requires parental permission and consent. And then Policy 6420, contracts with the board, adds a requirement pertaining to e-verify requirements to align with general statute. Be glad to answer any questions about those policies that you may have.
Policy 1310 is the one that Ms. Haynes had the question about, and she wanted to add. How was the wording sent, Ms. Haynes?
It would be moving the Bullet C3, which is the comprehensive sex education program, to D and combining that with what is there for D12. So all of that, under that first Bullet C3, which is our current process, we do require parents to opt-in to our comprehensive sex education program. You remember, that was one of the conversations we had with both the MASH curriculum and the PARK program, the Making Responsible Choices program, is that that gets moved to Section D for parents to opt-in, which is the current process that our PE teachers and health teachers are following.
Okay, and this would include the, this Dove House curriculum that we just added tonight?
That would not necessarily include that. That is not a comprehensive health edu, or sex education program, but if the board would desire parent permission for that, we could.
No, I don't.
That does not include that. But that's a separate.
It was just a safety burger.
And then Policy 6420, contracts with the board, adds a requirement pertaining to e-Verify requirements to align with general statute. Be glad to answer any questions about those policies that you may have.
Policy 1310 is the one that Ms. Haynes had the question about, and she wanted to add... How was the wording sent, Ms. Haynes?
It would be moving the Bullet C3, which is the comprehensive sex education program, to D and combining that with what is there for D12. So all of that, under that first Bullet C3, which is our current process, we do require parents to opt-in to our comprehensive sex education program. You remember, that was one of the conversations we had with both the MASH curriculum and the PARK program, the Making Responsible Choices program, is that that gets moved to Section D for parents to opt-in, which is the current process that our PE teachers and health teachers are following.
Okay, and this would include the, this Dove House curriculum that we just added tonight?
That would not necessarily include that. That is not a comprehensive health edu, or sex education program, but if the board would desire parent permission for that, we could...
No, I don't.
Yeah, that does not include that. That's a separate...
Who is this, a safety program?
This is, that's, yeah, it's more of a safety program, like fire safety, things like of that sort. We do not require parent permission for that. This is the comprehensive sex education program that starts with, currently, our 7th graders.
I believe it also states it starts at 7th grade.
It does.
So it does.
It would not include those, it's a 6th, 7th grade program.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Taylor? Anyone who's ready to make a motion, then to approve the policies?
I make a motion to accept the policies as written between 1310, well, to say, K through, was it Q?
P.
T?
P.
Oh, I have a T.
P isn't Paul.
Oh, excuse me. P.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You'll make those corrections.
Yes.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Dr. Taylor. Okay, next, we have the item Q, the proposed capital outlay budget. Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. You have before you, we discussed this a little bit last time at the Cal meeting. We didn't anticipate on it needing to be voted on tonight. However, the due date from the county was May 27, which would not give us time to come back in June, so that's the reason we moved up the vote on this particular piece. The capital outlay budget is the traditional budget, which I gave you two at the last Cal meeting. The traditional budget is the way we've, we've basically presented our capital outlay over the last several years. The total this year for our capital outlay from the county, once adjusted, and we had the final figures, was $5,170,090. We've broken that out. You have a cover sheet that has the breakout by line items, roofing, annual renovations, paving, et cetera, and I would request that the board approve the budget as provided. I also gave you the work, the work documents that we use in planning our projects, with the understanding that these are work documents, and we sometimes have things that happen that maybe causes a project to be moved, or if a project's over budget or under budget. Typically, we're able to pretty much everything we, we put on our work document, but I wanted that before you, so you'd sort of know where the monies are going. Be glad to answer any questions related to this.